All right, good evening everyone. I'd like to call to order the September 11th Policy Subcommittee Meeting. Roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadaway?
Present.
Okay, so tonight, we have two things on the docket for the Policy Subcommittee. The first is the LVTI admissions policy, and I'm guessing that's why Principal Gallo is here. Joining us tonight, so Principal Gallo, invite you to come on down to the microphone and talk to us a little bit about that.
Good evening, everybody.
Evening.
It's been a great start to the school year, I know. I've talked to a number of principals.
Great to hear.
It's going well. So, we are presenting this early. A couple of things. There has been some significant changes, as you saw in your policy, with when the Board of Education met in May. They are mandating now lotteries and weighted lotteries for admissions to any career technical education school. So, we have developed the policy, as you saw. The one thing that we did notice is, within the policy, it now allows us to completely accept. It doesn't prohibit us from accepting our eighth grade students fully into Lynn Tech. So, one of the problems, one of the issues that we've had is, you know, we have these students that come in in eighth grade, and halfway through the year, we tell them, "You know, thanks for coming. See you. You're not going to stay here for the ninth grade." And it's been a real challenge, you know, and then I, you know, I kind of, you know, tongue in cheek say, well, you know, then at the end of the year, we give them a belonging survey and say, "Hey, do you feel like you belong here even though we told you we don't want you here?" But, you know, and it's, and I say that because the look on these kids' faces, it's tough, you know, because they came wanting that. So, with the new policy, it allows us to admit them into ninth grade. And I'm going to go a little bit about how we're going to do that, because we have to do it on a two-step process. So, our current eighth graders were not admitted under this, this policy. So, we have to, they have to reapply for ninth grade. So, for this year, our ninth grade is going to be the, the weighted lottery. I'll explain a little bit about the weighting. It's not a significant weighting like before. That weighted lottery with everybody else. The weights include four things. It includes thirty-seven absences within the last year and a half without looking at any data before seventh grade. And it's as of the date of application. This is based on chronic absenteeism, a year and a half if you're out twenty-seven days. But, the way it was written doesn't really say that. So, if somebody does, goes in November 1st and has thirty-six absences, even though they will probably be on path to be chronically absent, they still get that ticket. The second ticket comes through discipline, which is if a student does not have any thirty-seven H, thirty-seven H and a half. Those are the most serious. Those are the, the arrests, the drugs, the weapons, the assaults on, on staff members. So, if they do not have any of those, they get an extra ticket. And the third one, we decided to keep, because I think in our old policy, one of our favorite parts of the policy was having the students do the artifact. So, that artifact is the, not awareness but, I forgot the, the exact thing. But, what it shows, it shows the interest in, in the school. Interest, sorry. It shows them the interest in the school. Last, last time, that was part of our completed application, but now we can't have it considered a completed application. We have, we consider that as an additional ticket. So, students could get up to four tickets. My guess is pretty much every student's going to get four tickets. And I know that sounds like we're doing a lot of extra work, but I think with this new change, and when the Board of Education set up these regulations, as CTE schools across the state, I think most of us are going with these, these tickets. And I'll explain when we get to the eighth grade, how that's going to make it even more difficult. The, the part we're not doing is awareness. So, the, the, the regulation said you can count awareness as a completed application. Awareness deals with open houses, students attending open houses. And our, our thought is, you know, that some students may have, you know, their parents may work multiple jobs. Their parents, they may not live with their parents. There may be a number of reasons why they won't be able to come to our open house. So, we've, we figured that, that's actually, I, I didn't see that as very equitable just for a completed application. So, we let, we left that out. We're not counting, we're not considering that as a completed application. So, in, our application must open November 1st, and we can close anywhere up to March 1st. And I believe we discussed closing January 23rd, which is the last Friday of, of second quarter. And we're, we're going to work alongside the other two admission schools with that date, so that all, all the dates open and close at the same time. By statute, we must open November 1st, by what the regulations say. So, we are going to have the lottery for our ninth grade being accepted into all three hundred sixty students. That's our numbers now, if, if that's, you know, obviously, depending where, where we are with new programs. If that number changes, we'll adjust that number. So, there's no numbers listed in here. Now, for this year, and the reason we're doing this this early, is we want to run the same process for our eighth grade. So, we would run our three hundred eighth graders through this admission policy. Now, here, here's why I say, it's not nine, because it's a third of the number of time in being chronically absent. If they have twenty-seven or more absences in the first half of their seventh grade, then they don't get the ticket. So, it's kind of a little, because we cannot look at anything in sixth grade. Same thing with thirty-seven Hs, H and a half, if it happens in the first half. So, we kind of limit some of that, and, and we consider just not doing the weight. But, I, I think that might be questioned for, for, you know, when, when we look at this policy, and then when we change it for, for the following year, and I'll explain that. So, we're going to bring those three hundred students in. We're going to bring three hundred sixty into ninth grade. Those eighth graders will remain with us. At the end of the year, then, they can decide to stay with us, and if they do, they're, they're with us. If they want to apply to one of the other schools in Lynn, they are free to do that. And that, we, we must allow them that, that ability. For incoming ninth graders, we will now have sixty-plus seats. So, let's, if all three hundred of our eighth graders want to stay, then we would have a lottery for incoming ninth graders, sixty students at least. Ten, fifteen students decide not to come, we would add that to that ninth grade lottery. Fall in the same process as the, the, the previous one. So, a lot of the other language, I, I don't know if you have specific questions on it, because it's, some of that language has been in here where it talks about non-resident students, you know, those types of things. The answer, sometimes that question comes up, "No, we will not accept non-resident students." But, we have to have it in there, because if something ever happened and Lynn Tech could not fill its seats, then by, by regulation, we need to offer those seats to students outside the district. We had seven hundred and seven applicants for three hundred sixty spots this year. I don't think we're anywhere near having that issue, and things are going really well with our new programs and everything. So, that really covers the, the basic. You, you may have questions from what you read.
Any questions from members? Yeah, Member Reed.
Mr. Gallo, thank you for this. You know, I, I personally have mixed feelings on this as a statewide issue. I understand the equity concerns, but I think Tech's policy may have worked, but it seems like it's very similar to, you know, sort of what we've been doing, at least in terms of the standards. Can you explain, I'm just a little confused, what is the change? So, we had similar standards with the, the, the interest in the discipline record. So, now, instead of handpicking these people based on these, it's just strictly the lottery? Because it doesn't look like much has changed substantively.
So, so we act, part of our, our application did have a lottery.
Right, right.
A weighted lottery. So, so we've, we've already had some experience with, with lotteries. About twenty-five percent, twenty to twenty-five percent of our students came in under lottery. The differences, and, and what I think really started, our policy, so, when I, when I started, you know, four or five years ago, we were starting to attract, we, we were becoming a prep school, I'll just be honest. It just felt like we, we were attracting high academic students, and, and we were kind of losing our mission. So, the one thing that we did that I think was important was, we flattened our academic curve. We still kept it, where we had A to C worth a certain amount, Ds and Fs work less and less. Our attendance, we had to go by chronic absenteeism with our percentages. So, it was all based on these score numbers. But, the big thing we did was our interview, which was done in the students' preferred language. We, we had trained with, with Rubik. And that's where really a lot of differentiation came, where students were coming with us, and that interview was really geared towards interest in CTE. So, I think we were doing the right thing, but unfortunately, many other schools were not.
Yep.
So, we were, you know, they, they just made a blanket statement. So, the real difference is, it's all going to be on, on lottery, and, you know, that'll make, that'll make a difference. You know, I, because I think we, more and more students than I heard that didn't get in, that were, were, were more of the students like, "So, what were your future plans?" And they really weren't in the trades. So, that, that's, that's really the difference.
Just to sort of piggyback off your last point, so do you think now there'll be more applicants into the school? Because it's a lottery, as opposed to students have a, you know, different perception of if they can get in or not?
I, I don't think so. Again, seven hundred and seven is about half of Lynn Public School eighth graders. I, if it's, I, I hope it's not anymore. You know, but it really goes to show that, you know, really across the state, across the nation, career technical education is on the rise, and that's why we're, we're really looking at ways to, to expand what's being offered in CTE, and, and growing that way. I do, I do hope, you know, again, I, I wish we could give seats to everybody, because it is, it is such a need. Our hard, some of our hard trades, our construction trades are, have wait lists. So, we're even looking at expanding some of those. We're looking at opening new programs. Our construction craft labor is just opened, and one, one group of exploratory students, and they were just beaming after a week in there. And half of what they did was set up the shop, you know, so it was, it's just exciting to see. So, it's some good stuff going on.
Thank you. Thanks again for your work on this. I mean, I guess the silver lining is, we have the, you know, sort of, eighth graders can stay throughout the whole, you know, time in high school. So, thanks again.
That, that's the part I like the most about this, is, is being able to keep them.
Agreed.
Because they, we, we wrote, took love and care for them, and then we hate losing them, so.
Thank you.
Member Gailey.
I really like the points per subject, and I wish I had this packet in August when I ran into someone that was asking me about the requirements to get into Tech, because they were lambasting me on it. So, at least now I have this, so I can say, you know, it's not all like A students getting into Tech. It's, it's a system where they have a points, you know, point system, and I think it's really good. So, thank you for that, and I'm glad we're-
Sorry, can I, can I clarify?
Yeah.
The, the point, that's actually to get into the shop programs.
Yeah.
Which is, I don't, it's that, so if a kid gets into the shop program, we're keeping the same thing we do now. So, getting it, getting into Lynn Tech is going to be just luck, luck of the draw. Is really what it's going to be.
What is it going to be?
It's luck of the draw.
It's a lottery.
It's a lottery. Even though it's weighted, it's weighted very little, and it's really not going to, the weighting is not going to have a significant impact on it. And that's why we really debated on that. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that, that second page that you're looking at is, is admission into individual programs.
So, when I see that man again, I'll tell him, "It's weighted." It's a luck of the draw. But, the other thing is, what was it I heard about Tech being in, like, the top in the state? Was it something that you were statewide recognition?
For?
Many things.
Or like one of the technology schools in the state? True?
Did somebody not give me a memo?
He's not going to argue with that.
No, but I'm just saying, congratulations.
Well, I know we are, but people say I'm biased. Hey, our Skills USA is always National Chapter of Excellence, and can I, can I be out of turn and just say, today their project is, they are actually getting gift bags to our first responders, of just some, some chips and candy, and taking it to our police, our fire, Lynn community, our first responders as in recognition of nine eleven. So, just some great stuff going on at school.
Thank you.
Member Dugan, can I, may I share something?
Of course, yeah, of course.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to, for everyone to know that we're operationalizing the module from Power Schools that allows us to do the lottery through the electronic method, so that we have appropriate records, and so it, it won't be, it'll, yeah, it, it won't be out of a lottery box or anything like that.
Member Castellanos.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gallo. Always a pleasure to have you here. I have a, just a question around the waiting list piece. So, when we have students on waiting list, or, you know, I know that's not, I don't believe that's going to be changing, right? So, when we have admissions, when our students are in that, on that list, is it going to be the same protocol, procedure, how the, how that selection happens?
Yes. So, so once we draw the lottery, that's how the waiting list is created. So, next student on the waitlist, and again, that, that, we, we're not, by statute, we can't, you know, and that's one of the problems, is we can't really add, if, if somebody comes, comes in late from outside a district, they'd have to go on the bottom, because there is no mechanism of rerunning the, the waitlist. That's, there are, there are a couple flaws in, in how this was designed when it deals with, with the city schools versus the regionals. And that's one, one piece I think is, is missing, you know, but they would still, so when it comes, the students on the eighth, who don't get in on, in the eighth grade, they will have to reapply for the ninth grade. So, we will hold that waitlist, I, I believe, until the open of the next application, which is, which would be November 1st. So, students will be able to come in pretty much first quarter of eighth grade. And then after that, if, if any student who did not get in, they would have to reapply for, for those sixty-plus seats in ninth grade, and then they, they can get in there. And then we would create that, that waitlist would then be the one that let go, works through their whole ninth grade. For tenth grade, one student's, because it would have to be a lottery, but it also depends on shop interest, because they can only go into shops that we have openings in. So, we'd have to go down the, the waitlist, finding out what shops they want, and, and bring them in that way.
Thank you. Mayor Nicholson.
Yes. I just want to make a quick comment. I know that Tech has had to rethink this a few times, because you, you guys did it on your own, I think, recognizing there was an issue, as you said. Then, we had the Discovery Academy and the eighth grade expansion, then we had this state regulation. So, that, you know, that's, that's been a lot of movement, and I think you guys have been really thoughtful and reflective as you, as you've gone through this and done a great job thinking it through. And a couple of things I want to point out. One, you know, I know there's been a lot of turmoil, as, as Member Reed pointed out, statewide on this, on this issue, and it seems like everybody agrees the ultimate answer is to add capacity. And Lynn Vocational Technical Institute has figured out a way to add multiple shops and dozens of seats for our students, which I think is a huge win for our district. And the other thing is, for those students who are still on the waitlist, just a reminder that we, we do have the After Dark program for, for folks that are, that are still interested in developing those vocational skills, and, and just, just a plug for that, so, thank you.
So, you know further questions? Could we need a motion to put this to the full committee?
Yeah, make a motion to put the new Lynn Tech admissions policy to the full committee.
Second.
All right, roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Principal Gallo. That was very informative, as usual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up for the Policy Subcommittee, we have Policy J E B A, which is the maximum age for school admission and attendance policy. And I believe we're going to have Attorney Gallo, who's going to guide us through this one tonight. So, Attorney Gallo, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you. For the record, Lynn Public Schools Compliance Officer Charlie Gallo. Good evening, Policy Chair Dugan, members of the full committee, members of the administration, superintendent, and mayor. This is the second time in as many Septembers that I'm following Fred Gallo at the mic. No, no relation, but Gallows of a feather flock together, it would appear. All right. Max age. So, you have a one-page document in your packets showing proposed changes to Policy J E B A. That's the document with strike-throughs. You have a second, shorter, clean page, which is the proposed new J E B A. You may recall, I visited this past June and provided you with a letter from Attorney Katie Meinault. So, I won't go over it in great detail, but I'll just do a quick Cliff Notes, and if you have questions, I'm happy to take those. The special education law in Massachusetts defines a school-aged child as someone aged three through twenty-one. So, that means through twenty-one until their twenty-second birthday. The legislature has not specifically defined the ages for general education students, but does have a statute from the nineties that tells DESI, the State Board of Education, to do so. They have not, districts have done so on their own. And as you know, Lynn has had various ages over the past, really, six or so years. Subsequent to your most recent vote, there was newcomer guidance from DESI, which suggested the gen ed age should be the same age as the special education age. And the policy you have before you does that tonight. Prior policies were made based on data outcomes for students. This, this policy that you have before you tonight is based on guidance from DESI that was subsequent to your most recent policy. So, that is a Cliff Notes version of what I've presented a few months back. I'm happy to take any questions or expand on any aspect of that, of course, tonight.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Make a motion to move Policy J E B A to the committee, the full committee.
Second.
All right, roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Gallo. Yeah, clean one tonight. Thank you, appreciate it. All right. All right, so we'd need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadaway?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to bring the meeting of the Building and Ground Subcommittee to order. Roll call please.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
I don't know if anybody is here from the Plant, Plant Two Trees. There's been a request to plant two trees in the front yard of Brickett Elementary by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, and it is free.
Good evening. So, thank you for the opportunity to make the request. I'm Shirley Albert Benedict, the principal at Brickett Elementary. Earlier this summer, the PTO folks had come to me about the possibility of adding some trees to the front of Brickett. And Amy Butterworth, our president of the PTO, did some initial legwork and gathered some information to ensure that Brickett would be actually eligible for the program. It's the Greening, the Gateway City Program, which provides free trees, free tree canopies to cover select urban residential areas. I've been working with David Bresnahan from the Department of Conservation and Recreation on this. He did actually confirm that a similar project had been done at both Ford and Drewitz School a few years back. I did actually get some confirmation from Deputy Fritz that ISD was okay with the idea. So, I met with Larry, I met from the DPW, I don't know his last name, sorry Larry.
Donahue.
I met with David, and we kind of mapped out where the trees would go. The idea was that maybe we would put four in the front of the school, and then once they kind of marked it out, and then I saw students in the, playing at recess, I was like, it was too much. Too much space. You know, we run a postage stamp over at Brickett. So, I didn't want to lose too much play space for the children. So, the idea is that we will put two trees in the front of Brickett, if you grant the request. And the first would go in the corner. Both of them actually will be inside the schoolyard, inside the fence, not at the sidewalks or anything. One would go at the corner of Byer and Lewis, and then the other would go on the corner of Autumn and Lewis. And it would look beautiful. So, anyway, we actually came up with, with this plan. And then, again, like I said, after looking at the, the space, when students were there, it made the most sense to go with two rather than four. So, the request is that you approve the project. It will include some work that will need to be done by DPW to actually dig the holes in the asphalt to plant the two trees. And just the benefits of having trees is certainly to boost the aesthetics in front of the school. It would provide shade for students and staff in those harder months. That, the front of that building is baked all day by the sun, so that would be such a benefit for us. Trees are good for the environment, especially in densely populated areas like Brickett. And it's also going to help build our Brickett community. The Brickett Community Neighborhood Group has agreed to actually water the trees until they become established. So, it goes just beyond the, our Brickett school.
Member Castellanos?
Well, that last piece was my question, is the, the sustainability of it. So, who is going to be doing the watering?
So, we have a community near Brickett School. They actually do some, they've done some plantings in the teacher's parking lot. They've, they got a grant through the Cultural Council, and they've done some beautiful work there. And it's all neighborhood volunteers. So, they actually let me know that they would volunteer to water the plants as well, the trees as well.
This is awesome. I want to thank Amy and the Brickett PTO for- This is awesome. I want to thank Amy and the Brickett PTO for all this.
Yeah, bringing it to me. She did the initial legwork, so I, yeah, it was great.
It's awesome.
Team effort.
I was going to say, this is also igniting other thoughts of, you know, urban gardens, kind of utilizing the space that we have now. I think about Engels and some of the work that the Food Project and some of our other partners have brought forward. I never knew about this program. When I read, read it in the packet, I didn't know you could just order, like, trees. I didn't know we could do that.
I didn't know either.
Yeah, I know. It was pretty clever. I want to say thank you to Amy, learning about the, the Gateway City, the Urban Canopy Project. It was interesting to see us be part of that. It was nice to see. I'm really, really grateful. Yeah, I don't see an issue, so I support it, so.
Mr. Penya, Member Penya.
I just want to say a shout-out, you know, the Amy Butterworth, the PTO over there, do a lot of amazing work.
They sure do.
Community meetings, and yourself, and the staff, everyone over there. It's nice to see some trees there, you know, kind of uplifting, you know, give the good front look over there. And I know you, you've been working hard with the neighborhood and the mayor and the police to really, you know, tighten things up in the neighborhood.
It is. It, it's very community-oriented. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Member Gailey.
I just want to thank you for coming forward, and also thank the PTO President, Amy. This is a great idea. I think it will provide a lot of shade. And once upon a time in Chelsea, I planted a tree there also, with my garden.
I recently asked our principal whether we could give him time during the school days to work on this, and I was informed that this year, this program has not personally been successful, and that we would have to do it on our own. As far as members of both the PTO department, I mean, why? Because we are the teachers of the city of Lynn, even though we all have very different jobs and roles. I feel that every city of Lynn, they, they, they treat us the same, and we treat them the same way. The majority of us treat them the same way. They confirmed that they are not expected to complete mandatory training outside of their scheduled work hours. In fact, one firefighter laughed at me when I asked him if he was expected to complete the mandatory training on their own time. When finally he stopped laughing, he said he actually do not do that on their own time. Their training is scheduled and constituted for the day. Historically, this PTO department has provided time in the past for in the workplace of this type of training, and that has established past practices. And this did not be discredited. A separate notice is not only a tear, but it also sets a concerning tone for future expectations. One possible solution would be to reschedule our professional development day in November, to accommodate the time required for each training. I know that the training must be completed by the end of October, but I am sure teachers do do that on their own time, if they knew they were getting that done. Based on the time of hiring, there's a first line which is sixty minutes. There's two which requires ninety minutes. Mandatory reporting time is sixty minutes. Every other year, we have to do after training, which is forty-five minutes, and then it's not a reselling for twenty-five minutes. This program is passing in two hundred and thirty minutes, which is almost close to five hours. This clearly illustrates the significant time commitment due to us, or time of our contact for all of these. As you know, teachers already dedicate the schedule time beyond our contact hours. Many of us rise to school relatively early before we can start time to prepare our classes, and ensure a new transition at the start of our day. During summer, elementary teachers often spend time to twenty hours setting up classes of their own time. We also plan, we also regularly train, and form lessons at home. We consistently go above and beyond to meet after-class maintenance requirements. The requirement to complete mandatory training outside of our special hours is not only amusing, but it appears to be a violation of our, of the law. I respectfully request that this matter be reviewed and reconsidered, and that a clear and appropriate solution be provided. Thanks very much.
I have a comment I want to say.
... conditions she has a race for the people city. Year creativity of eighteen, seventeen, and eighteen years old. And, and again, as you've been doing, senior and beyond, in terms of his high degree in, such as children. Welcome to the program. Tom Chan, our alternate from LPTI, is senior in math extension technology, medical and LPTI, four GPA, thirty-four, many honors, advanced education, high school. He has certifications in OSHA, pen, computer IT, basic, and mascara, and IT. I'll stick up for the room, that's where it should be figured out. Tom Chan is also president of Wilkinson on scholarship, running a virtual game design coding, in the math club at LPTI, and the chairman of the National Arts Society Academic Committee, members of Native and Native, early series, the chairman of Social Media Committee, and a particular expert in acting, someone who's good for gamer, playing video games, 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 video[158.11]
To students, this is a critical learning piece for students because students are learning themselves how to critically think about their own learning and know what it is they need. So that feedback piece is actually an instructional practice that is imperative for engaging them with the tier one, the grade level work. And then writing across the curriculum, these are just examples of how writing is, lives in all content. So you have science labs, or you have math journals, or you make historical arguments. They live at all different areas, not just ELA. Also, what's important is that utilizing student data when we're talking about writing and how to give meaningful feedback are related. And then this is just a visual of all of the components that are in play when we're talking about excellent instructional practice. The key, the biggest ones that we're focusing on this year are the culturally responsive practices with our culturally responsive curriculum, utilizing formative assessments, which is learning while it's happening, so students are demonstrating learning while it's happening, the scaffolds that we spoke about before, and then differentiated instruction. So what do we offer to students that is the same rigor but might be a better entry to the work that they're doing? Oops, and then, oops, sorry. You've had a lot of presentations over the last year about social emotional learning, so I won't live here. It's really just that uniform positive behavioral expectations that are happening across the school and across the district. One thing that I would like to call out is, last year and this year, we've received the Rethinking Discipline Grant, which has very much focused on restorative practices and circle training that we're continuing to do and expand. So the key to MTSS is the data decision making. You have to know where your students are in order to be able to tier them. There are several types of assessments that are utilized to tier students. So you begin with the universal screening, there are diagnostic assessments, progress monitoring, benchmark assessments are huge, and then the curriculum embedded assessments. So when you think about what, like, the progress monitoring cycle, there are different times in the year when you want to know where the students are and be able to measure their learning and measure their growth along the curriculum scope and sequence and the standards. And so that's what these assessments are for. And then MTSS, problem solving. This is the idea where you start with, you look at the student's data, you determine, okay, where is an area that we want to improve upon, then you design an intervention plan if they're below grade level. You would also design an intervention plan if they're above grade level as well. So if they're already mastering the curriculum in front of you, then they need a higher level of the content. And so they, and then you would determine, okay, what, what do I need to do or change? Historically, the reason that a framework like this is so important is because if you think about, like, decades ago, the traditional learning, this would be, you know, a teacher would give, you know, quizzes leading up to a test, and if they didn't score so well on the quiz, they would say, you can come for extra help, or, you know, I might give you another quiz. But historically, they didn't used to do that. It was just, you got a zero on the quiz, you could go for a night back, and then you take another, you take the test, a summative test. What's different about MTSS and the, and the opportunities now is, first and foremost, those classroom-created quizzes and tests may not have been uniform and standardized. And now we have access to very rigorous tests that are entirely focused on the standards at the scope and sequence of the school year. So we're very, we are very knowledgeable about where our students' learning is. These next few slides are examples of the handbook that we started to create. So this is going to be teacher-facing. This is a flow chart. It's busy, but I'm not going to go through it all. The most important thing that you see is what I talked about, never moving away from tier one. And so along the left-hand side, that green side, is tier one instruction is always happening. The other piece of this decision-making tree is, at each porch, at each point of an assessment, depending on where they score, what intervention do they need? And again, when I say intervention, I'm not always talking down, I'm talking up as well. And so this is just a flow chart for decision-making. When teachers are working in PLC, they're looking at data and they're determining what their students need. So the decision rules and progress monitoring, this is really what we're building out now this year. Teachers have been doing this work all along. The Dr. Shorter is leading the charge around standardizing across the district what could be some predetermined cut scores for the data along the way. So we know what our benchmarks are. But as we're looking at a very involved cycle of improvement, rather, like, if a student is involved in a four-week or a six-week cycle, what would the cut score be for when they dipped below, and what score do they need to rise above and exit that? This, again, is teacher-facing, but it is examples of what is the tier one, tier two, tier three instruction, and what is the difference between those different tiers? So teachers can refer to this. And what's more important for teachers, really, is this one, which is, what is the assessment? What is the curriculum? What is the amount of time in each of the tiers to be able to determine if that student has received the proper instruction for them to move out of a tier? Okay. Now, we're going to shift to, this is the last section of those guiding principles. This is all around leadership, because leadership is key to the MTSS model. This is a new way of collaborating this year, where it's the Collaborative Team for Success. So we have MTSS leadership teams, we have instructional leadership teams that live at the school, and we have the professional learning community PLCs that live at the grade level with the teachers. And so we're adding a collaborative action meeting, a CAM, which looks like this. So in the middle is ILT, so that's the Instructional Leadership Team of the school. And then around the perimeter are some district folks who will enter that team once a month to be able to leverage their expertise, their knowledge, their access to resources to support the ILT in meeting their goals and moving their students' data forward. Another little shift, this has been happening along the way, but we're better defining what learning walks look like. So if you'll remember, I think it was two or three years ago when we came forward and we talked about the, the learning walks we were doing in schools. Now, we have several types of learning walks. So we have a district instructional leadership team that will go through classrooms and collect data, make observation about the instruction that's happening. As well, we have principal rounds. They've been, they've started that last year, where they're going around schools as principals, looking at different instruction in different buildings. And then, this year, we started to talk about appreciation walks. Different principals do different things with their own staff, but we're looking at a way to celebrate the practices and not just always focusing on, like, where, what we tend to focus on, which is the growth areas. So the leaders in the district are along a continuum of learning as well. We have now in place the, the Uniform MTSS Decision Making, and we have the DataWise Framework. We had started with our leaders, and we're expanding that to all educators around the DataWise, which I will share with you here. It's involved in that it has eight steps, but at the heart of it, it's very logical in how you utilize DataWise. And so if you look at step one, it's all about organizing for collaborative work. So it's not even getting to the data yet. It's who is on the team, and what are we pursuing, what are we going to look at, what is the problem at hand that we want to solve? So ultimately, MTSS really addresses the needs of all students in the academic behavior and social emotional realm. It allows students to be placed in the right, in the right tier, but for not too long. So it's flexible, and there's always a constant continual evaluation of the student data and making sure that they're getting what they need. Well, that's the end. One team, one process, one goal, student success. So that's what we are all about this year.
Thank you so much. I got Member Dugan and then Member Pena.
So, thank you, Deputy Cohen. That was a really impressive presentation, very thorough, a lot, but very thorough about what's happening in the district. And I'm geeking out a little bit here, because obviously, I live this stuff every day, so it's, it's great to see. I wish I could be on that side, talking a little bit, too, so it was good. But just a couple of questions. You had mentioned win time, so what I need time. So what, I don't know, I mean, I live in the elementary world, you know, in my, in my career, and, and so what I'm picturing is just, you know, the kids with their folders, and they, some kids need fluency, some kids need, you know, comprehension. So how does that look at our schools, win time, you know? And are they in groups? Are we staffed enough for that? Like, how does that look?
Yeah, it's been actually very different in different sections. So in the high school section, or in, in secondary, at the middle school as well, it has been like courses, like interest group, like grouping students according to a class, per se. In the elementary realm, it's really grouping students according to data and providing, filling in the tier pieces that they require. Yeah. So it could be, you know, a student requiring more, like, English language learning supports, it could be more reading comprehension, it could be extension work, but yeah, exactly. And so, and I would like to say that not every schedule has a block, per se, but we have intervention cycles that run during classes, and then we have student grouping in, in classes all, everywhere, right?
Great, thank you. So that, that's great to hear. I love that. I love the acronym, too, what I need. That's, that's, I use that in my class, too, so it's great. You had mentioned partnerships with families. Could you talk a little bit more? I know that, you know, in third grade, that letter has, or, you know, at the elementary school, that letter has to go home about their reading levels.
Correct.
But a little bit more about that, like, how's that going to look?
It's, it's challenging, right? Because we don't, we are still building out a face plan, so a family and community engagement plan, but in regard to this, where we are at this level, it's involving families and students in understanding their own data. So if you think about having team meetings or data meetings, instead of like your traditional parent-teacher meeting, having a student-led meeting, and having that meeting not be, I got an A, or I got a B, but having that meeting be, like, this is where I scored, this is a realistic goal to move my score here, this is what I'm doing, but having it led by the student.
Okay.
And having the involvement on the family side about how, then, can we partner with families to support that student's goal?
Okay. That's, that's very interesting. I love that. I'd love to hear, you know, in the future, how that's going. That, that sounds really interesting. And then finally, I've brought this up a few times, PBIS. And we've talked a, a couple times, how that's kind of sporadically throughout schools. Is that throughout the district now? That's, that's common, something we're using all schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so, you're right. It has been, I think, I'm looking back at Dr. Kalella, because we've been involved in trying to reimagine PBIS. What happened traditionally with PBIS was it was a formal partnership with May Institute, and there was the training around that particular acronym. But, you know, truly, I think that the schools do do a fabulous job at creating culture and climate and establishing, building wide expectations. And so we're actually shifting a little bit, not so much in the elementary, but a little bit, with that restorative practices piece and the really social justice piece. And, and I have to say, that last June, I think it was, we had a lot of elementary principals go through the training and express a lot of interest in pursuing that even further. And that kind of connects to that, your question earlier around family partnerships, because the circles are really ultimately meant to be led by the students, and that the adult is facilitating the circle. And so we're looking to sort of, start to shift more in that direction, as opposed to fall under the umbrella of a partnership with somebody outside of the Linn Public Schools, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, and even the DESI is shifting, too, because they've, they've started to move towards SEB.
Emotional behavior.
Social emotional behavior. So, yes, there are so many acronyms, and, and I think what we really want to do is pull, rethink PBIS, and think more social emotional learning, and integrating the five competencies from CASL into the classroom instruction, so it's seamless. And one of the goals we're looking at in the, in the social emotional department, we're exploring with teachers who are interested in this, is partnering on, rather than having this separate curriculum that sits over here, like rug time, for example, integrating that in instruction, which is really what the standards are around collaborative work.
Throughout the day, so building that positivity in the schools.
Correct.
Yeah, I've seen that firsthand. It's, it's powerful, what it can do. So I'm really excited about that. So thank you.
Yeah.
Again, that was a great presentation, so really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Pena, Member Gailey, Member Cassianas.
Presentation, I appreciate it. Very thorough. I have a question around tier three, with the test of support. So when you have children that are, like, having IOP, or five or four, you know, and they, like, for example, do you use speech therapy, or are you trying to put them in groups in the classroom so they don't stay away from the tier, I mean, from tier one? Or are you trying to, like, group grade levels together?
Uh, yeah. So in the, in this classroom, there's always a tier one direct instruction, which would be like whole group. And then there's also a tier one small group, where you're still tiering to the grade level work, but you're working in a small group with students who are at the same place where you are in terms of how you can engage, like, what supports you need to engage. The tier three is very separate time. So this is a time when we, and this is a challenge, too.
Yeah.
Member Pena, like, this is a real challenge, when we need to provide services that are very intensified, like you're saying, that doesn't interrupt their learning in the tier one. So we do create flexible schedules for students where they receive those supports, but that are not at the cost of receiving tier one.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, and I can see how, you know, sometimes you have, one school may have a, you know, just one, you know, speech therapist.
Yeah.
And now, my question was, are you trying to group grade levels together to try to, you know, to avoid, you know, separating the children so they can stay on the same tier?
Yeah, that's right. We, right, exactly. We don't want to segregate students at all, right? But we do want to group students so they're receiving the, the supports in a timely, I think what you're saying is, like, in a time-efficient manner.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Member Pena. Member Gailey, Member Cassianas.
So my questions are like, are these the handbooks?
The handbook.
No, that's not, no, that's the district student handbook. That's not the...
Oh, the district student handbook.
We haven't released the MTSS handbook yet.
The MTSS handbook.
Okay, so my question is, why we, it's going to go out a month after they've been in school?
So these practices are in place, but they...
Usually, you get them at the very beginning of school.
Uh, MTSS handbook?
Whatever these handbooks are, you should get them at the first day of school. They walk in, they should have this, they should know what they're prepared for. Like, what are you preparing for? The parents should know, they should know their expectations.
Uh, I think...
Maybe I can better address that. So, so MTSS is a framework that, it's not new to Linn Public Schools or to any of us as educators. We function in this way by delivering instruction. What we're trying to do is provide visuals and a, and a very structured guided path for teachers to understand how they transition from tier two and tier three, whether it's two to three, or three to two, and then, or only one. So it, it's not something that, this is sort of an ongoing process that we have. We've been, we've been implementing many parts of this throughout our schools. What we're doing for the handbook, and we've been working on it for quite some time, several months, is just for consistency across our schools in implementation of the framework.
Yeah, it's like codifying the, the practices into one place. But the, to your point about opening school, the scope and sequence and curriculum maps are underway. Like, teachers are very familiar with their curriculum maps. This is just a matter of kind of codifying to what Member Pena was saying, where the learning happens.
Can you go to the slide where, so, just to, it's not moving.
Yeah, I don't know.
So Deputy Cohen showed us the slide where it said Massachusetts DESI model. That's, yeah, if you just go, they updated this, yeah, they've updated this over the years, but this has existed for several years at DESI, and it's been the expectation from DESI that all, all school districts, right, and that all schools focus on this tiered system of support. It's just that what we've done is make sure that we expand it and elaborate on each part of this, so that our teachers and leaders, and students and parents are very clear on what this actually means. How do they, how does it look in our classrooms? So that's, that's the reason. And we've also been working on receiving a lot of feedback from our leaders and our teachers. So the, the release is at the end of this month.
Okay, and then the other thing, we're constantly talking about data, but I wonder about that poor kid in Sped and dyslexia, like, how are we going to take care of them? They would be like tier two, tier three, or maybe tier one, depending on where their reading level is.
Well, that's, that's the point. So, so tiering a stu, students don't live on a tier.
Right.
And, and not in everything.
It's where they learn.
So, so that's why it's important to look at an individual student's learning, because any student could score anywhere based on their knowledge base that they're bringing in to the assessment. And so the, that, that's, I think, what's the most important thing about MTSS, that it's a moving, learning is a moving target, and our job is to always assess where that student's learning is, and then bring them to the next level.
And I just want to point out, for, for all, you know, clarity's sake, that we've, we talk a lot about universal, universal design learning, UDL. We've talked about that, right, over the last decade, I think, as educators. And really, what MTSS is, it clears, right, it makes it very clear what universal design learning is. So, so that's the framework that DESI has selected, and many other districts around the country have selected. It's just that we're, again, really making a point of sharing what it, what does it involve, and what does it look like, and also then taking, you know, that extra step of, like, what is the acceleration, which many times when we live in tier two and three, we forget about what is acceleration look like for students that need the acceleration, right? They already read the chapter, like, they're, you know, it's the, it's the three, it's the few students that have already finished before everyone else. What do you give them to do? Like, how do you move students beyond what those goals are, which, as teachers, we're used to doing? And all we're doing is, we're, we're writing it down so that we have a system where everyone is supporting the learning of each, of each student.
Thank you.
Member Cassianas.
Thank you so much for the presentation, it's all pretty robust. I had a couple, just, just, if you could refresh, for the guided prin, I think it was the guided principles for this slide was progress monitoring, professional development, partnerships with family, and there was a fourth one, for the multi-tiered system of support. I think you had, we had our own. You were just on the slide, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, what was the fourth one?
Ryan, was it this?
It's this, the slide that you were just on.
Oh, I was, sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, you changed. Yeah, no, this, the DESI slide. Our principles, could you go through that, like?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So the eight guiding principles were, MTSS is for all students, leadership is essential, teachers are on, are at the center of differentiated instruction, MTSS is grounded in problem-solving and evidence-based tiers, progress monitoring, this is the additional one, progress monitoring, common language and understanding, professional development, and partnership with families. Yeah. And that common language and understanding, I think, is the conversation that Member Gailey and Dr. Alvarez just had. It's codifying the language and practices in one handbook, staff handbook that could be shared with families.
I appreciate that. I also, as you were, you know, that, this process isn't, it's not new. And it's, I could clearly see you guys are, obviously, you've been updating and trying to figure out how we can implement it within our own system. The, when I see the, the collaborative action meeting, the monthly, I think the CAM teams, I really, I like that. I think the instructional leadership team with the, the different folks at the table is, it's, it's important. I have a question more around, I know we're going to, we're going to internally, obviously, it's like a self-check, right? We're going to, it's a diagnosis on our own, but part of data, right, how can we cultivate outside, I guess, agencies or factors that are going to impact our own data system? Because I, I don't see, like, a coll, I guess, a community partner piece to the team. I know it's internal, I think that's what the goal is, to make sure that Linn Public Schools is doing a, a job to diagnose our own, but is there going to be features within the model to open up partnerships, to gain data?
Yeah. You know, I think that already exists in the wellness meetings that we have, so, right? So like, when we have the wellness meetings around families, and the social, emotional, and behavioral, that, that in particular is a time that outside agencies come in as well. And when we are expanding, like, whether it be classes or the program of studies, or we always bring in partners in the, in the work, in the teaming. So I, I see that point well. I'm going to have to think a little bit more about other opportunities, but it lives firmly in social emotional learning and the, and the wellness team meetings.
So that being, so how do we, I guess, how do we cultivate? Okay, that's a good point. So how do you cultivate, how do you blend, or how do you extract the nuggets from those wellness to you guys' table? Would it be the attendance officer, or, it looks like the assessment director?
Oh, it could be, yeah, sure, absolutely.
So they would come in and report at the CAM meetings, on the monthly report, say, hey, I, I attended the wellness meeting at ABC, this is what I saw. I guess...
It's really about that shared learning, is, is the point.
Okay.
And for the academic piece, you know, always our measure is around the metrics on accountability and what, you know, what student achievement is expected to look like, based on the cut scores and thresholds. So it's just going to depend, right? So in, in that partnership, like, we have an on, an ongoing schedule of meetings with DESI around accountability, and especially for our schools that are targeted for assistance.
Okay. I appreciate that. My last, my last question would be around the, the MTSS school leader walkthroughs. There's like, there was six buckets, right? I know, so how are we going to utilize the information that you guys are gaining through these processes? And also, I, I figure you guys are going to quantify, each bucket has a certain quantified strategy. What, what is going to be the, I guess, how do you streamline it? Because it seems, when I, when I review, it seems very overwhelming, so it seems like a lot of work.
Yeah.
So I, I kind of want to hear how you're going to streamline, or, I guess, make it...
Yeah, so at the district level, we're working on three of those circles, and you might want to go to that slide.
Which ones?
And we've, you know, this is where we started back in August with our principals to talk about, like, what is a DILT walkthrough, right? What is the instructional round? And what is... And what is the, you know, the principal rounds that they're doing? So, and of course, appreciation walks are, are them internally as a team. Like, at the district, we don't, we don't necessarily look at those. But the, the entire visit is really around, we've had to refine a walkthrough tool with a rubric, which is part of the DESI rubric. But we've had to made, make a lot of modifications to it based on the learners that we have in Lynn. So being that half of our learners are English language learners, we've integrated the MLE walkthrough tool into, right? What does our, what are we expecting to learn when we go to our classrooms? We've also looked at, you know, what is, so what is the inclusion and equity goals in terms of, you know, classroom delivery of instruction? And what do we expect to learn? So there's a rubric there. There's obviously the teaching and learning that goes with the data collection. But it's really about improving instruction, and then using assessment data to say, like, how do we calibrate, like, how do we know this is working? Right? Because if the assessment data is not meeting the metrics that we've set out, or our accountability, accountability metrics that we need to meet, then we obviously have to make changes. And that's what we've been doing to try to create school improvement in each of our schools at, throughout the last year.
Thank you, everyone, for the questions and for the presentation, and for everyone working on this. We appreciate it. So item, we have any votes taken in policy subcommittee meeting? Member Dugan.
Yes, we have two items that we need to bring to the full committee. The first is the LVTI admissions policy that was put forth to the full committee for a vote of approval.
A second?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And then the second was our policy labeled J E B A, which is our maximum age for school admission and attendance policy. We needed to make some changes based on legal advice and DESI, things that were happening with DESI. Attorney Gallo presented that one to us, and it was presented to the full committee as well for a vote.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Any votes in the building and the ground, subcommittee?
Yes, there was. There was a request to plant two trees in front of Bricket Elementary. And a motion was made to let them plant those two trees in front of Bricket Elementary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
How about a motion to amend the agenda to move communications up?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
All right.
Close. Communications and information.
Thank you. First, we have the annual information regarding cost, budget, number of school-based arrests, citations, and court referrals pursuant to MGL Chapter 71, Section 37p, in parentheses, d. Mr. Charlie Gallo, would you like to join us at the mic to just share? So each year, we're required to provide information to school committee on a number of categories. And so Mr. Gallo will do that this evening for us.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Alvarez. Good evening once again, everyone. And once again, for the record, Charlie Gallo, Lynn Public Schools Compliance Officer. You have in your packets from me a letter dated September 4th. Just stepping back for a moment, in spring each year, you have various budget meetings culminating in a budget hearing typically in June. Within it, you see budget numbers for the various departments. You see school resource officer budget numbers. You see SEL budget numbers. At some point in an ad hoc way, you see numbers around student incidents. I can think back to doing that when we revised the student search policy in, I think it was August of 2023. But those have been sort of ad hoc sharings of informations. What we're doing is hoping to get the ball rolling with a more literal, more strict compliance with the statute that Dr. Alvarez mentioned. This is proactive. This is not, it's a result of any order or any complaint. But that statute says that annually, not later than August 1st, we'll report certain data items to the school committee and to DESI. I want you to know that those things have been reported to DESI historically in a timely manner. Kevin, through Kevin McHugh on the finance side, through the data center, and Matt Cronin on the numbers side. But the second component, we're hoping to start now to share in a more formal way, and to do so each June or July, moving forward in strict compliance with the statute. This was something that really just came up through our work with Chief Ready. We have been working closely with Chief Ready to make sure that there's a good annual SRO, MOU in place every year. And this is sort of the last leg of bringing us into full compliance in that area. So the letter before you has the cost of salaries for SEL staff and school resource officers and for last year, and the budgeted amounts for this year. Thank you to Kevin for including those. You've seen those numbers before in a budget context. There are the numbers of arrests and police referrals in the past two years. I put both years so that you could have comparisons. They are similar numbers from year to year. The number of violent incidents, which is a raw number over the past two years, almost the same one year to the next. And then finally, we included over and above what is required, because it's such an important topic, the number of bullying allegations. And you will see that bullying allegations decreased, excuse me, by 25% last year than the prior year. Last year, the compliance department took over the oversight of bullying district-wide. What we began to do is not just track allegations, but to track allegations, and which of those were substantiated and which were not. And you, and so we now have data to tell you that bullying allegations went down 25%. And that of those allegations that were made, about half were substantiated and half were not. That might be that the facts didn't line up. It might be that there was one incident that had to be addressed and needed to be addressed, but because it was one incident, did not constitute bullying. So those are the items that we wanted to share in that letter. I'm happy to, to answer questions if there are any. But this is proactively just trying to get into strict compliance with the statute that Dr. Alvarez mentioned.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get a motion for the executive session, and whoever makes a motion just state the reasons, yeah.
I'll make a motion to go on executive session for the request to approve the executive session minutes from June 26, 2025, and to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to the monitors, and request to, for contract negotiations with, for Howard Greenspan.
In the minutes?
Second. He said it. I think I said the minutes. Did I? Yes. Correct, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
We're just gonna go back to communications for a second.
So sorry. I, I just wanna take a moment before we go to, into executive session to thank our students, teachers, our leaders, our staff, and our parents for a wonderful opening of schools. Additionally, I want to thank our chair, Mayor Nicholson, Dany Smith, Tom Bork, and ISD for a very smooth opening in terms of all of the changes that we made. We had multiple locations that were new sites for our students, which we'll elaborate more on and, and share some photos at our next meeting. And I do want to also, while I can't release full accountability information, I do want to share that at our next meeting, we should have the ability to fully release our information. Our school sites do have the data, and we have been reviewing our district data. You know, we have some incredible news. I, I want to say that without sharing any details, because I'm, it's embargoed still, about two-thirds of our schools have improved in terms of accountability. And that is no small feat. So I'm really excited to be able to share that, hopefully, at our next meeting in two weeks. And thank you all for, for our first, a successful first meeting.
Thank you so much, thank you. Did have a motion that was made and seconded, great. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Where we going?
Yeah, where we going?
Where we going?
Where we going?
Yeah, where we going?
Yeah.
Backyard.
There we go.
See you later, Fred.
You guys, you have offices in here, right?
Fifth floor. Up there.
Yeah.
A lot better than Bennett Street. A lot better, you think? I just mean the construction and all the other crap.
Oh, wow.
That's a nightmare down there.
Well, do you come this way or that way?
Oh, you mean traffic wise?
I mean, traffic is, but traffic is brutal.
John Hogan's post, it's just hard to cross the street with a green light, so it started coming back this way down.
Yeah, I think so. I always, I'm always like... Did you?
No, just because, you know.
Do you just give me a time? Oh, we all signed, we all signed this one too. This is Howard's contract.
I almost talked him into taking a little raise.
Who are we waiting for? Brian. Brian.
Playing with the hand dryer.
Oh, did you check them out?
That thing is scary.
But you know what? But it blows so fast.
Oh, yeah. He's playing with the hand dryer.
You like that hand dryer?
All right. Is there a motion to enter regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. And then the other item was a contract to extend the terms of the Linn Public Schools, Linn Schools Committee Attorney, Howard Greenspan, on the same terms for one year.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Woo.[350.13]